Okay, let's stand for the pledge and the prayer. And we have the honor tonight to have a gentleman here retired from the military, Mr. Joseph Gunner Vasquez, and he's come by and did the pledge for us. We're honored to have you, sir.
Please, raise your hands. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the pledge.
I'm praying. Our heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Lord, we thank you for our school system, thank you for our community, God, we thank you for our families that we represent, God, we thank you for the ability to be able to do this, we thank you for the mental knowledge that you give us, we thank you for the spiritual leadership that burns deep inside of us, we ask tonight that you would be with us in a mighty way, God, that you would have us do what's approved by you, and, Lord, that your will be performed. Lord, once again, we do love you, we thank you for loving us, thank you for Calvary. We ask all these things in your precious name. Amen.
All right, we'll call the meeting order. Mr. Self, we have anything to the agenda?
I would suggest, Mr. McKinney, that we move the closed session before we go into any statements of action tonight. I believe that it would be beneficial for us to discuss some things that had to do with the safety of our students and also personnel.
Okay. We'll do that then. Do you want to go through the strong schools first?
Well, I'll just tell you that the strong schools update has created some opportunities for the school systems across North Carolina. The primary points of that particular document have to do with the fact that the expectation is that all students will be in the buildings now. There is not an expectation for a Plan A, Plan B, or a Plan C, nor is there any expectation for any form of remote learning other than for those who have significant health conditions. The discretion of what is going to happen as far as masks and some of the other pieces has been totally left up to the authority of the school board. There are recommendations regarding masks and cleaning. Some of those have changed from the previous school year. There is no expectation for a wellness screening when students enter to the, entered into the buildings. There still is the expectation for masks on any school transportation because that has been passed as an expectation by the CDC. It's not a suggestion from them, it's a statement that this has to happen. We will still be using some of the same mitigation pieces that we have in the past. However, the very extensive cleaning that was in place last year has been removed from the strong schools toolkit, mostly, I expect, because the new science has shown that the transmission of COVID-19 is more airborne than surface effective than anything. Those are the primary changes, and if you need to go, if we want to go over any of the more detailed pieces, we can. I think tonight that the board needs to consider what are we going to expect of our staff and our community as far as being in buildings and outside of buildings and going from there.
Okay. Then let's, with that, let me entertain a motion to go into closed session briefly, and then we'll come back out and have Ms. Allison give us her report.
Just, just real quick, let's approve the agenda.
We have to approve the agenda now.
We'll approve the agenda first, then we'll go into closed session.
Let's do that.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of going into closed session before any discussion.
All right, we have a second. All right, all of whom favor by show of hands? All right, so approved. Okay, do I have a motion now to go into closed session?
I move this one County Board of Education going into closed session for the purpose of discussing information as privileged, confidential, or not a public record under North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A1.
Second. All right, all of whom favor by show of hands? We'll be back shortly.
Let's call the meeting back to order and apologize for runs so late. We just got too many things on the plate here we're looking at. So we'll call the meeting back to order. Let's start with our discussion and go back to strong schools and and our survey numbers and all that, Mr. Self, if you want to add any more to that.
Well, thank you. Somebody still. The Central Office, we sent out a survey to all of our staff, about 325, 340 of them, and asked for them to respond to a series of questions about their preference regarding masks in the schools. We had 209 responses out of all of our staff, which is about a two-third response rate. And from that, we learned that two-thirds of those would prefer that masks be optional for students and staff. There is about a sixth, one-sixth of those responding who would prefer that all students and staff wear masks indoors. Now, there were some other options on there that had to do with those who are vaccinated not having to wear masks. But by and large, our staff is interested in having masks as an option, at least for now. And so I wanted to present that and give that information to you so you could use that as part of your considerations. Okay?
Okay.
And other than that, I think it would probably be a good idea for us to bring Ms. Cochran, I almost called her Ms. Dowlett, Ms. Cochran up and talk to us about the COVID in the community right now and maybe what the CDC is saying. Is that all right? Ms. Cochran.
A little nervous this evening. It's been a little while. If you don't care, I'd like to read a statement for just an opening remark, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. I'd like to take just a minute to remind the public, our community, that this pandemic, COVID-19 and its variances, is an ever-evolving state. We, as your Health Department, are doing what we can by providing guidance and promoting vaccines. Unfortunately, the vaccines are not 100% effective. No vaccine is. There have been breakthrough cases of those who've been vaccinated contracting COVID-19. But with vaccines, masks, and social distancing, we hope and pray our community will face less hospitalizations and deaths. This is truly what we are striving for. All of us have an opinion on this pandemic, and our tempers can flare from time to time. I venture to say during this past year and a half, we have all been stressed, worried, and angry. But no matter your stance on vaccines, masks, or other measures, I encourage you to have patience, empathy, and civility towards each other. I thank you for your time and for the continued support our community and the school board has shown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going with that. The governor came on today. Were you able to listen to that before I even, okay. Okay. So our numbers are going up across Western North Carolina, as well across the state and the United States. With that, I gave you a handout. We'll look at this first one. Currently in Swain County, we have 35 active cases. On Monday, we had 18. Just put that into reference. This past Monday, we had 18 active cases. Today, we have 35. In Graham County, I pulled this off the CDC website. They have 30 active cases. Cherokee County has 66. Clay County has 27. Haywood has 127. Jackson County has approximately 68. Of course, this data is a day late, so some of these numbers will ebb and flow with that. On the back, on the next page, it shows you the breakdown by age for Swain County. Since the beginning of COVID, there have been 173 positive cases from ages zero to 17. The graph below that shows you basically from July 12th, we had zero cases. And then it shows you the line graph that's steep incline from Jada 23rd till to now. The second page is just a comparison of the total COVID positives. It starts with the left-hand corner. It's January 4th, 775. Then February 4th, a month later, 1,132 COVID cases in Swain County. As of April 30th, there was 1,266. As of today, there's 1,323. Do you have questions on any of that? The next page looks like this. Has Swain County at the top. This is pulled off CDC. This is our vaccination rates. If you look at the top, the total that has been fully vaccinated is 5,815. The percentage of total population is 40.7%. This information is different from that that is on the dashboard of the NCDHHS. That is because that dashboard does not include the EDCI numbers, as well as VA federal prisons such as that CDC does. So if you're looking for accurate information on vaccines, I encourage you to look at the CDC website. Roughly, the ages from 12 to 17, 256 have been vaccinated in that age group. Please remember, that's everybody, that's in Swain County. So includes children that go possibly to charter school, Swain County Schools, and Cherokee Central Schools, as well as those that are homeschooled, 256, 258, excuse me. Down below that, you just have, I pulled the information from the other counties about the total percent of the total population that's vaccinated. If you look, Haywood County is 44.2%, and we are number two at 40.7%. The Moderna vaccine, we have been told that it should be authorized to use from 12 to 17 by the 1st of August. So we will be offering that as soon as that authorization comes through. We can have that. You can come to the Health Department. We can even set something up through the school as well to offer Moderna if parents are wanting, have been waiting for Moderna. I've been told it's 1st of August. So hopefully, I would see in the next two weeks. Again, you're seeing rapid increases for case rates, positivity, ED visits across the state, United States. There has been a sharp increase in hospitalizations for COVID. I got an email. I sent an email to Lucretia Stargel. I got an email, I sent an email to Lucretia Stargel, course with the hospital, and she said, "We have experienced an increase in COVID senses as compared to the very low senses, often zero patients we had through the spring and summer. The situation is fluid and monitored daily, and we encourage all precautions to mitigate the spread of the virus." You're probably hearing a lot of information or on the news about the Delta variant. It is now causing the vast majority of COVID-19 cases in North Carolina and nationally. It is more infectious than previous variants. The vaccine effectiveness at preventing the infection is lower against Delta than against other variants. But all data so far supports good effectiveness against severe disease and death. Right now, for those that test COVID positive, 70 to 80% of those tests are the Delta variants. The vast majority of the recent cases are in people who are not fully vaccinated. That's roughly 94% of all COVID cases are those that are unvaccinated. Of course, the CDC came out with guidance on Tuesday, and the state followed today. So they both recommend that people, regardless of vaccination status, wear a mask indoors in areas where there's substantial and high transmission of COVID-19, as well as in schools K through 12. Mark has already pointed out that masks are required on buses, vans for transportation. The one thing I do want to bring to your attention that is in the public health tool book, the strong schools, if students are wearing a mask, two students are wearing a mask consistently, correctly, if one student becomes COVID positive and they're both wearing masks, the second student does not have to quarantine unless they become symptomatic. So that means if one person becomes sick in the classroom and they're COVID positive, we don't necessarily have to quarantine anybody. They get to stay in school. But if those two students are not wearing a mask, or there's no mask in the classroom, and one student becomes COVID positive, we have to quarantine everybody within three feet.
For how long?
That would be dependent on...
Their symptoms, right?
Well, it's not dependent on the symptoms. It's the number of days, and I believe it's seven days with a negative? Seven days with a negative test.
Ten days.
Ten days if they don't test. So I don't know if that's been discussed or put that out there to you, but that is in the guidance, that if kids are consistently and correctly wearing the mask, and one becomes sick and the other one is, does not show any symptoms, there's no quarantine necessary. Well, it's not, I shouldn't say necessary. It's not mandated unless they do become sick, and at that point, they have to be tested anyway.
But if you're wearing a mask, you can't get COVID, right?
No.
So they're based on the mask and not the distance?
Right.
They are, yes, worse so on the mask now than the distance. Which is good, because you want all your kids in the classroom. Because there'd be no way if we had to do six feet still.
No.
No. I said a lot of things.
Now, if you just make the decision for us, we'll be all right. Any other questions, Allison?
Well, if, and I don't want to ask you to make a recommendation, but if there is, what is the, what's the definition of an outbreak in a school at this point? I know before it was...
It's determined on how many students or how many people it affects. Five cases that are linked together, we believe.
And that's the same as the back last school year?
Yes.
Is there any data or anything out there that's talking about why the, I know the Delta variant, why all of a sudden that it went from zero, we basically went from zero to 60, just out of nowhere? Is there anything?
No, the, what we're being told is that basically it's just more transmissible. It's easily spread. Even with those that have been vaccinated, unfortunately, it still can spread. Before, with just COVID-19, novel COVID-19, if one person was, had COVID-19, theoretically, they infected two people. With the Delta variants, an infected person infects up to six people.
So even though the infection rate's higher, the vaccine is still sustainable to some degree for death, for sure, for loss of life and the severity of the symptoms, correct?
That is what I'm being told, yes.
Yeah. And it's still got all the variables, age, weight, underlying conditions, all those things?
Everything.
Now, I may have misunderstood you. The Moderna vaccine, has it been approved for 12-year-olds?
Yes, sir.
I didn't think.
It's 18 and older. Pfizer, it has been approved. Moderna's 18 and older. That's the one we're waiting on for the 12 to 17.
Okay.
On this sheet with the current numbers, it says we have eight active in the zero to 17 age group. Is that, is there a way to break that down further as far as school-aged?
Yes, we can break that down for you.
What's going on, what Kim said, is there a, have we seen a difference? Did you call it novel?
Novel, COVID-19, novel.
I like being able to separate it, it could have been in little boxes. Is there a difference in the Delta variant that we're seeing with those younger age groups than we saw with the novel COVID-19?
I do not know that answer.
Okay.
Amber, do you?
Symptoms and severity are somewhat similar, it's just more transmissible.
Yes. So what happens is they, they test for COVID over all COVID-19, and then a percentage of those are sequenced through the state lab and contract lab for all of the variances. At this time, when they do that, they do that sequencing, that 70 to 80% of those tests are all Delta variants.
Okay.
Basically, I was told last night, if you have COVID-19, it's probably Delta, is how it was explained to me.
Yeah, I would agree.
Makes sense.
Just makes sense because we had such a decline with the regular.
And if a child in school tests positive or has symptoms or otherwise has to be quarantined, then what happens to their family members at home? Do they have to likewise have the same quarantining?
It depends on vaccination. You know, if the siblings have been around them, this, that, and others, there's a lot of factors with that.
Other question?
Is there a point in time that you would come back and say, there's a lot of between zero and 17s or between the school-aged, and this is kind of concerning? I mean, would you be able to?
I can do that. I'm concerned now with the drastic increase that we've seen overall. But yes, definitely if we start seeing significant numbers in school age, I can let you know that.
We have decided to meet every, about every two weeks, so we can keep, and more if we have to, to keep with this, so the decision and what we make on that can change from one week to the other. So we want to be ready to make any decision way before we get in any serious situation.
Okay.
And I would appreciate your help and all of that.
Yes, thank you. With that being said, Mr. McKenney, I know that we feel pressed, perhaps, to make a decision tonight, so that the families can know what they're walking into. But the decision can be postponed also. We've got two weeks until, or about, about a week before our teachers come back, and two weeks before the students come back. So if y'all wanted some time to ponder this, we can call another meeting and come back. It's up to you.
Well, I think we're already planning to meet two weeks from now to that approximate week after next, before school starts. That's up to the board members. We don't go ahead and make a decision where we are at this point, but knowing that that decision can change. Actually, on a daily basis, we had to. So we're going to be on top of it with your help. Because the last thing we want to do is to get in a situation that kids in school get sick or, and the staff gets sick, and we have to close schools.
Yes.
And as fast as this thing goes, you know, we know anything can happen.
Other than the age breakdown on the kids, is there anything else that you want to see or hear?
Maybe just an overall of county numbers as well.
The county numbers as well, still? Okay.
If you want to, I don't know if you're going to produce a breakdown for your own use weekly or track that. If you wanted to share that with them, you could have their email, if it's available. Okay?
I have one more question about this one. So this was updated today, this form. And it's sent, is the eight active cases in zero 17 since July 26th until today?
Could that change what we have as of today?
As of today, okay. Do we know what an increase would have been or when those started, started rising?
Well, it would have been in the past...
Seven days?
Yes, seven to 10 days.
Thank you.
So I suppose, unless there's more information or more questions?
I don't have any more right now.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dowditt.
What date is the next meeting?
I don't know.
Five thirty.
Well, we may be before then, right? If something happens.
Theoretically, August the 9th.
Yes.
It's regular schedule.
Amber could present that night if you wanted to.
Do we want to? Wait for another week?
For action items, do we want to go ahead and make a decision, or right now, what we're going to, our decision is tonight, or we're going to wait a couple more weeks and do that? That's, if you want to do, if you want to make one tonight to start with, we can.
I just think it's, if we do that tonight, then I think that we've got to make it very clear to everyone that that could change at any day or week, or whatever between now and when school starts. So it's not a definite plan. And that's my only concern, that people, the decision gets made, and then that's what they're relying upon, when that may not be the case when school starts on the 16th.
And to think it's very important, a very important point. And I also think that it's also important for everyone to remember that regardless of whether you, as the board, decide that you want to mandate masks in the building or outside the building, or everyone do that, or if you choose to not mandate it at this point, anyone has the prerogative to wear a mask for protection. And there will be no retribution or ramifications for that, because they're feeling that they want to be safe, you know? So one way or another, if people are concerned and you decide not to make that decision tonight, they can still protect themselves in that way.
I'm comfortable going ahead and going with what we talked about, and then with the understanding that this can change on a weekly basis, or even a daily basis if have to. If we, if this thing explodes more, we make, we change our decision. Is that understood? I mean, we're okay with that. So I'll entertain a motion.
At this time, I'll make the motion and move that masks are optional, but the board will revisit this and reinstate a mask requirement for everyone in the system if the community and the school conditions deteriorate and masking is necessary to prevent the outbreaks and the spread of the virus in our schools. With that, we encourage anyone who is unvaccinated to wear a mask, and those who are eligible to be vaccinated to get vaccinated.
Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would just like to urge the faculty, staff, parents, please be responsible. I want to say that again, our parents, please be responsible.
And I hope they understand that this can change, and if it gets worse, we're going to protect kids, and we're going to protect staff. And there is a possibility that we could get into a situation that we close schools. Let's hope not. Let's hope that people are responsible about it, they're responsible about wearing a mask, they're responsible about getting a vaccine, and we hopefully get ahead on this thing and get ahead of it and feel safe in school. My biggest fear and my biggest worry is, and literally, day by day, we make a decision and then some child gets seriously ill, or some parent from that child, and we have to live with that responsibility. So this is not an easy task. It's the hardest thing I've ever experienced. We're going to do what we think is right day on a day-by-day basis, so with that said, anybody else got a comment or? All right, all those in favor, vash of hands. All right, motion is carried. Thank you.
Allison, we can call an emergency meeting at any moment, okay? And so if there is any point whenever you or your team feel that we need that right now to reconsider this because of what you're seeing, please call me, and I'll have us together in a matter of whatever the limit of hours are of the board policy. Okay? All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McKenney, we have personnel that we really need to take care of tonight, and technically, that's the only other action that we can take at this meeting because of the, because it's a special session, okay? So can I go ahead with that?
Yes, let's go ahead with that.
I would recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Lydia Jones Faust as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective June 30, 2021.
Make that motion.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, vash of hands. Motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Daniel Woods as custodian at Swain East Elementary effective August 4, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I will make one comment. It seems like we're accepting a custodian resignation on a monthly basis.
We are.
It's a rotating circle. We have got to do something.
I've been in conversation with Ms. Tredway about what we can do about that financially, because I believe that's one of the biggest pieces.
Right.
We are waiting on the state right now.
I know.
Because there has been a promise of pay raise, and a raise on top of a raise can create a financial quandary for the school system. Okay, so please, everyone know that we are looking at that, and we sense the same concern.
Good.
Okay? So I believe that we have a motion and a second on that.
We do. Any other comment? All those in favor, vash of hands. Motion is carried.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Cola Williamson as teacher at Swain Middle School effective August 1, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, vash of hands. Motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Mary Ellen Hilton as teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary effective August 2, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, vash of hands. Motion is carried.
If I could make a comment, Ms. Hilton has been a tremendous employee for us in so many different ways, and she comes from the teacher assistant group, and that's another group that we need to pay close attention in how we can support them. So as we're looking at custodians and all other non-certified staff, we need to consider them as well, okay? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the leave of absence request of Jennifer Chatham. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the leave of absence request of Jennifer Chatham as teacher at Swain West Elementary. Leave of absence, for those who are not familiar, means that she has basically requested that she not work for the school system for one year. But at the end of that year, if she desires to come back, she can request and then we will have a job for her somewhere. May not be exactly the same place she was, but because it's a leave of absence, we are actually kind of guaranteeing that we will try to find a place for her. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, bash your hands, motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Terry Walking Stick as behavior teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective August nine, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, bash your hands, motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Robbie Brown as teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary effective August nine, twenty twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, bash your hands, motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Valerie Bates as teacher at Swain High School effective August nine, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, bash your hands, motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Auburn Barker as E C teacher at Swain Middle School effective August nine, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Bash your hands, motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Leah Jackson as reading assistant at Swain East Elementary effective August nine, twenty twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, bash your hands, all right, motion is carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Ryan McMahon as assistant principal at Swain Middle School effective August nine, twenty twenty one. I believe we already have recently hired Mr. McMahon as dean of students. But funding sources have shifted some for us and we're able to move him into a different pay status because of that.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, bash your hands, motion is carried.
We are in the difficult season of hiring and it is, it's very probable that there will be some more staff movement and perhaps some other positions that we need to hire very quickly. And I will notify you when those are coming up, but the, the board policies gives me the, the opportunity to hire on an emergency basis pending your approval at the next board meeting, but I won't do anything unless I've notified you of that, okay? We're just in a crunch time right now and things are still shifting, okay? Your next board meeting is now August the ninth at five thirty. That will be a special called session. Your next regular meeting will be August the sixteenth, which is, is that correct? That's not right.
Your next reg, the regular meeting is August ninth.
Our regular meeting is August ninth, your next meeting, well, that will be your next meeting, won't it?
Yeah.
Correct.
Unless we need it.
Unless we need something different, okay, all right. For, forgive my mistake on that. August the tenth, we'll have our faculty beginning of the year gathering at the, the art center, scheduled to begin at eight thirty. That evening, we will be officially handing out plaques to our different employees of the year and talking about a few other things and getting ourselves moving forward. You are certainly invited to attend that and would love for you to. And if at that point any of you would like to address the, the staff, please let us know and we'll put you on the agenda. Also, there will be, and I forgot to bring this with me, Jerry, I will send it to all of you. There will be faculty meetings on the ninth and the tenth at each of the schools. And if you would like to make an appearance at those and, and have a word of encouragement or support for the staff, I know that they would appreciate that. But I will send you an email tomorrow with those specific times, okay?
We've got two principals here. We've not done this before, but we have not been able to hit the school in the last year and a half. And I for one miss sending the school. I run into people sometimes and they're a teacher at the west or east or something. I don't even recognize their face because I've not seen them. What I thought would be good and healthy for us to do is maybe attend a faculty meeting for all, any of them that wanted to. And just see if they've got concerns or something and discuss and at least for us to get a chance to in person say how much we appreciate the job that our folks have done, especially given the last year. I mean, it's just tremendous what they've done with our kids in a crisis that we've had last year and all the stress that we've had. And we all show some appreciation, I think sometimes it's better to do it, look in them in the eye. And because we do and, and, and it's heartfelt. So if y'all would like us to do that, well, those that can, if we can be there, we're going to try to be there and do that.
I think that you would prefer to do, to do a walkthrough when the students are in the building.
Hopefully we can this year, unless it gets real bad because I, I think it gets us in, in touch with the schools better. A lot of things we want to do and that would be one of them.
On August the ninth, the second shot for the sixty-five students and the seven adults who participated in the vaccine clinic a week ago or so, they'll be receiving their second shot.
Okay.
And Mr. Sutton, Dr. Sutton has scheduled that with Blue Ridge Health very well. So that if there should happen to be any symptoms or reactions, that, those can be overcome before school starts for the students. There is also another vaccine clinic that's scheduled for August the twelfth during open house. That could be at the middle school, could be at the high school, I think we're really leaning more towards the middle school at this point. And then that will allow the second shot for the vaccine to be offered the Friday before Labor Day. And that gives the students or whoever's participating in that three days if there needs to be a recovery period. But Dr. Sutton and, and his team are doing a really excellent job at helping us put those things together and I appreciate it. Chloe Reagan is going to be moved to regular ed teacher at Swain West Elementary, that's a transfer. Cindy Arch, who has been teaching at the middle school in the sixth grade, is going to be moving into the fourth grade. She'll be taking the place of Jennifer Chatham for this next school year anyhow. And Elizabeth Gray Lakey is going to move into her position as an English teacher at the middle school. Ms. Lakey has been working there for a couple of years. Are there any other personnel pieces that we need to cover? Okay. Traditionally, or not traditionally, according to board policy, there is not a public comment section or time during a special called meeting. Mr. Parton is here though and I noticed a minute ago that he, there was a question. If you want to entertain that, then as the board chair, you have that prerogative.
Yeah, if he's, if he's got a question for.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm here as a, my capacity as a citizen.
Oh, okay.
As a parent of a child who's going to be in the road in the public school.
I was under the impression I could talk. I didn't know, especially, I thought this was a special session for the mask mandate part.
It's, it's a, it's just a special session to, to cover that and also personnel. And by board policy, special sessions don't have to have public comment time. Those are only required in regular session one times a month, one time a month. But Mr. McKinney has the authority to include you in, in what's going on if that's what he wants.
That's what I wanted to, I wanted to talk about the mask stuff. It's why I came and listening through everything, I appreciate you just letting me speak as a concerned parent. I want to go back to the masks and I wanted to compare us to some other counties who just voted on some of this. And I'm sure that they voted sort of like unions just voted, if it comes back up, we can make changes. But I believe Jackson held that they would require them. Haywood optional, Macon optional, Graham optional, Clay optional, and Cherokee counties were all optional. I do know the numbers that Ms. Cochrane was talking about, I'm sure I'm going to see them pretty soon again. I do not have the belief that the CDC recommendations are all true facts or that they have changed them several times, again and again and again and again through this whole pandemic. And if you go to the CDC and look up what are the benefits of getting vaccinated and all this stuff and every one of their, under their data, they, they'll give you links to their data. Will also tell you, we are still studying. Everything here is still a study. There is no definite, I think it is. It's not good that we've had lots of people throughout the country say the vaccines will keep you from getting COVID. That is not true, you heard Ms. Cochrane say, that is not true. The vaccines are a study also. They do help, they claim that they help in transmission. If you have a vaccine, you're not as much, you're not as transmitting it as much, I don't understand that unless it just keeps you from getting it, which they claim it don't keep you from getting it. But it does, they claim that it helps you to have not as severe symptoms. I do not think anybody is going to get on to anybody for wearing a mask. Mr. Sale said that anybody could wear their mask, I do appreciate that because that is true. Everybody should be responsible for theirself. I do think though that we should not treat people different if they question getting a vaccine. I do not think that that is a silly concept. I do not think that getting a vaccine that is different from any other vaccine that we've ever had, not studied near as long, I think. Because one man said, well, you, you had to get, when I was in school, we got the polio vaccine, yeah? How long did it take to get that vaccine? Thirty years?
I don't know.
Something like that, really, it's several years. But every vaccine, this is different, this is not even a vaccine made like other vaccines. So when we are treating people differently, we, we need to be sure we understand, we shouldn't treat people who question the vaccine different. We shouldn't treat people like it, which I still don't understand, those who are not vaccinated should have to wear masks. That blows my mind. Because if the vaccine does everything that they claim it does, which I know that it don't, and several people here, I'm pretty sure knows that it don't. It, it does not, i- if it did, then why would you make, treat somebody different for not wearing a mask? If you're protecting yourself, you're doing your responsibility, that's what you do. My responsibility is on me and my kid. And I don't want to hurt my child, my child had lots of issues wearing a mask in school last year. Lots of issues. And it was hard on him, it caused him anxiety and stuff and certain teachers treated him different. Certain teachers let him pull it down under his nose, some did not. And that was not near in the school system, though that was at a different place. But I know from his experience, it caused him issues. But I want you to remember, I'm already disheartened though to hear, we've all went through this pandemic. And it disheartens me that we're already, knowing what we found out about the first pandemic, the exercise we went through, which I know it's still part of it, it might be a variant. But of all we went through, it disheartens me that we're already saying we might have to shut school down again. That is disheartening with all the facts of the mortality rate on COVID is a lot higher than, I mean, it's like ninety-nine percent. Is that not true?
I don't know.
It's high mortality rate. But I think we all, what we should have learned, I don't know if we've learned it. But I hope that we do remember this, if this does, if we do get some spikes, we should have spikes. We should have had spikes all year, all summer. I do not understand how we didn't. I know if any of you guys have rode through town, I drive through town on my way home every day. But there is lots of people here from everywhere else, lots and lots of them. So I figured we would have a spike all summer, but apparently we were lucky and didn't. But now they say we are. I hope that we are all careful and I do not take, don't think that I don't believe there's a disease, I do believe there's a disease. I believe it has harmed several people, some people I know, it has affected their families. But I do also believe we don't need to do exactly the same as we did the first time when we started, we need to think about it. We know how it affected our kids before shutting schools down. We definitely need to tread lightly when we're talking about all this. But I also understand you just have to do your job. And if you feel like that's protecting our kids, I know you have to do what you have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything else?
I just want to tell Mr. Parton that I want to speak to you not as a citizen but as a commissioner, that I appreciate the support that you've given us. And the hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that, that the commission has allotted us for reading assistance is making an impact. It's going to be significant this year, I believe. And my intent is to bring you the numbers soon to show you how, what effect that had in a difficult year for us. So I appreciate you, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And we are trying to find a way to dedicate that new building up there that y'all played a big role in.
Yes.
In helping us get all that work done, the ice cream.
Yes.
I don't know if you, you've seen it. And it, that's a compliment to our, our county for a small county, the small resources, we've accomplished more than I, than would be expected.
It's big steps.
All right, if anything else? Now the motion is adjourned.
Removed.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, stand up and adjourn.
August ninth until, unless we're either.